Anything, just realize you're a part of that process too. So any questions you have, you know, make sure to ask about the bills that you're seeing being paid and those types of things. So again, but overall, very good controls. But because of the segregation inherent to the size of your organization, we do have that listed as an item. Again, no compliance findings with government auditing standards. And then on page 75 is a report on Minnesota legal compliance. And again, this is a limited scope look at select statutes that we're, the Office of the State Auditor provides a checklist to us to look at. There were no findings applicable to our legal compliance guide specifically. So as a result, there's nothing to report there in the Minnesota legal compliance audit guide. Again, it's fairly limited scope, but it looks at some of your bidding requirements, it looks at some of your deposits, things in that collateralization of deposits and the investments that you invest in. So again, nothing to report there. And again, that's on page 75 of the document. There is also the smaller document, which is a communications letter. There's some required communication and the financial analysis, which I'm going to walk through here briefly with you as a counsel. But again, as far as the required communication, nothing to report there. Everything is very much in order. We received full cooperation of your staff from our audit procedures. Obviously, our procedures were a little bit different because of the remote environment we worked in, but really very, very efficiently done. We appreciate Marty and Judy. Million three hundred and twenty-four thousand four seventy-five. That is an increase from last year's one million two seventy-six. Expenditures were up significantly, eight hundred ninety-five thousand three eighty-two to one million two fifty-five three fifty-four before, and really the driver there, which we'll see on another slide, is some capital outlay for a fire truck, several hundred thousand for that. So fund balance, which takes your revenues minus your expenditures and minus your transfers. Transfers were, there were some transfers out this year as well. So the fund balance was one million four hundred and seventy-five thousand forty-six dollars, which is about 14 months of your operating expenditures of one million two fifty-five three fifty-four. Of that total fund balance, the unassigned component, which is in the audit book, which is more at your discretionary balance, if you want to say, one million one seventy-eight two oh seven. And that is about 11 months of operating expenditures. So your policy says a minimum of 50%. Your unassigned is at about 11 months or almost 100%. And then the overall is 14 months. So you've exceeded your minimum fund balance in those categories. And really, from just a quick side note, it could be a very important thing as we're hearing the tax collections at the county level for the taxpayers. It's been slowed due to the COVID outbreak. So as a result, you may need more of your fund balance to kind of temporarily keep your cash flow going until those are collected because there will, could be definitely a delay in capturing some of those tax collections. You could expect the tax delinquencies maybe to rise a little bit as well for, hopefully for a temporary period of time. So again, five-year analysis there, just a real quick look. Increased revenues, increased expenditures, your fund balance has grown from about nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand to a million four seventy-five. Actually dipped a little bit from 2018 to 2019, but still very healthy balance. So I think you should be very pleased with those financial statistics. Go to the next slide for Marty, please. So general fund revenues, again, a little deeper dive here. Did mention that the revenues are up about $48,000 to a million three twenty-four. Your tax levy or tax revenue was very consistent, 920,000 compared to 918,000. Biggest driver was a miscellaneous category, up from 42,000 up to about $94,000, 94,819. Reimbursements and investment income. Investment income has been significantly higher in all of our audits this year, just due to the market, you know, being able to generate a higher rate of return. And then you did have some reimbursements that caused the increase there. When you look back at that line item over the five years, you do see some, sometimes you're in that 95 to $100,000 range, others it's in the 30 to 40,000, so not atypical. Back in 2016, you had a little higher miscellaneous revenue stream as well. So overall, very consistent revenues. Intergovernmental is about 221,000. I believe the local government aid is about 195,000 of that. So obviously, that's something the state legislature will probably look at as they try to balance their budget as to where those levels might be. But just to give you a quick snapshot, that 195,000 was the local government aid of revenue for 2019. And again, very consistent with 2018. Next slide, this looks at some general fund expenditures. Again, one million two fifty-five three fifty-four was the total expenditures. That's up 359,972 from prior years. And again, if you look at the composition on the bottom, you do see your capital for the fire truck increased significantly. Your capital outlay was almost $300,000 in the general fund for 2019. The major driver again for the increase. Also, some increase in public works and public safety. Public works was related to some snow and gravel, snow removals and gravel, public safety, mortise on siren, radio repairs and some maintenance. So again, we'll kind of look at it where it comes on budget. And again, you were within your budget with one minor exception on the expenditure side. So again, living within your means there. And obviously, you had planned for the capital outlay dispersment for the fire truck. With that, we'll go to the next slide and I'll just kind of capture that budget and actual results. So again, as you're well aware, at this time of year, you'll probably start thinking about the 2021 budget. So back up, you know, a couple of years and look where the 2019 original budget was. There was a final budget amendment for some expenditures. Those are the first two columns. The actual amounts are shown there in the third column, and then the variance with the final, whether you're positive or negative. Overall revenues were 128,000 or about 9.7% over budget. And a vast majority of that was the miscellaneous, which is the reimbursements and the investment income. However, your charges for services, license and permits, intergovernmental and assessments were all slightly over budget. And your taxes were actually slightly under budget just due to the delinquent taxes that you budget for the full levy. You don't collect all of that in the current year. So there was a slight amount under there. But overall, a nice, healthy increase of 9.7% over budget on the revenue side. Overall expenditures were 84,000, nine fourteen, under budget. And general government, public safety and culture and recreation were all under budget. The fire component was down and public safety. For public works, you were just slightly over budget, about 17,765, just due to some maintenance costs there. So just wanted to point that out. And then finally, on the very bottom of this, you do show that you do budget a transfer out of the general fund and you did transfer out approximately what you budgeted. Budget was 161,000 and it came in at 160,537. So overall, on the bottom line, you had projected a change in fund balance, a drop of 305,000. You were much better than that. It came in at a drop of 88,880, so a positive variance of 216,000. The reason why you kind of maintained your fund balance level from 2018. So very nice work there. Going to shift gears and on the next slide and just talk about the water and sewer funds. So again, those are designed to be self-supporting with user fees, designed to capture resources to reinvest within the water and sewer fund operations. And that's through the mechanism of funding some or all of the depreciation. The water fund revenues and expenditures were actually fairly consistent this year. The revenues were down about $6,000 to 150, just under 152,000. Operating expenses were up slightly, 154,000, but really about in the middle of the three year period range there. You did have a small loss with depreciation, 2,499. When you back out your depreciation, there was a surplus, if you want to say, of 56,968. So you're funding about 96% of your depreciation in the water fund, which is a good thing. However, there's also some other things you need to look at, like debt service, principal and interest payments, which we'll look at on the next slide here. And you are also capturing a fairly significant amount of non-operating revenues in the water fund. And that's relating to some water tower rent and some special assessments. And that was 68,327. So overall, the cash position in the water fund is about 401,000. And that was an increase of about 105,808 this year. So that's a good sign. If we flip to the next slide then, I'll just want to show you a little bit more from a cash perspective. And really, as I mentioned, that second from the bottom line shows that you, the cash did increase 105,000 after paying your principal and interest payments through operations. The point I'd like to make here is that if you back out, take that net change in cash and back off the antenna rent and the miscellaneous revenues and then the transfer in, which is about $84,000 each year, so roughly 165,000 negative off the positive 105, you can kind of see that the, there is technically a net loss without any transfers or the miscellaneous rent and revenue of about 66,580. So technically, it's not self-supporting because of the transfers in. And you could argue that the antenna rent and the miscellaneous revenue is not a user fee, but is really just another revenue that's being captured in the water fund. So again, I know you've been looking at the rate structures. You did make some changes to that. So again, hopefully that'll make it so it's not quite as reliant on those transfers and the antenna rent and things like that.
So Steve?
Yes?
With the increase in the water rates that we have initiated this year, and we only started billing third, second?
Second quarter.
Second quarter. What is that going to do for us?
Well, that'll certainly have a positive effect. Obviously, you may need a full year's capture, if you want to say, to really show the true impact of that. So I would expect to see improvement for fiscal '20. You may not see the entire improvement until fiscal '21, when you have a full year's captured of that particular rate increase. But I know talking with Marty, you know, there was a rate structure. You kind of looked at where those things needed to be. So again, if those assumptions are correct, that should have, you know, definitely a positive impact in kind of making the user fees themselves, kind of being self-sustaining into the.
To break even.
Theoretically, yes. And again, we'll certainly be reporting that as we go along, kind of maybe can even do a little more of an extrapolation for 2020 to say, yeah, with nine months, you had it this. If you would have had the full 12.
Right, okay.
You know, this much to say, yeah, you would have been spot on or might a little more or a little less. And we can kind of walk through that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Next slide is just looking at the sewer operations and then I'll close for any other questions you may have. So again, sewer fund is a very capital-intensive operation. So you do have large amounts invested in your plant and the equipment. So there's a big, a large depreciation charge every year for that. But again, industrial usage was down, so the operating revenues did decline to about 256,000 from 313,000. And again, pretty consistent with 2017 and 2016. Your operating expenses actually went down about $31,000 this year, which is a good sign, to 562,000. So about, and most of that was repair and maintenance related. So you did have a loss when you fully load the depreciation of 306,343. And actually, when you add the depreciation back of about 288,000, you still had a loss of about 19,718. Again, the non-operating revenues, again, a similar situation here, the 121,000 investment income is about a third of it, assessments about a third, and then refunds and reimbursements about another third of that 120,000. So again, cash position in the sewer fund is about 1.4 million dollars. That did go down about 227,000. And if you flip to the last slide then, I'll just kind of walk you through that as well to kind of show you, in fact, kind of that net change in cash over the last five years. So this really just takes cash flows in, revenues in, you know, cash in minus the expenses you pay. And then you have to pay your debt service, principal and interest that you pay on your PFA loans, and then the property taxes and assessments that are collected, and then the interest and dividends received. So here again, about done about 227,72 for 2019, a little bit higher than 2018, a little bit lower than 2017. But again, as you see the last four years, and you add all those up, you know, a significant decline in the cash position. So there again, Councilor Becker, that would be, that rate structure or that rate increase would hopefully mitigate that drop in those cash reserves that you've been seeing in the last.
That'll be great.
Because this one has been going down fairly significantly. And it's really, a lot of it's just due to the fact of the debt service payments that are due, you know, on the, to PFA on the infrastructure. So hopefully, we'll have at least some clarity on where, how it's working next year as we talk and both of them there. So with that, we do have, we will be filing the books, obviously, with the State Auditor as required, and we'll just get those electronically out to them. Just want to thank Marty and Judy for all their help this year. Again, kind of a unique year. Hopefully, we're back onsite bothering them in person instead of through electronic means. But again, appreciate all the help they did for us. And with that, I'll just close and say thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, if there's anything in the audit books that you might want me to go through more or clarify, happy to do so.
Well, it wasn't a popular move when we had to jack up water and sewer rates, but we had, I mean, it hasn't been done since the 90s, I believe. And the city's just been taking a kicking on it, so.
Yeah, there's kind of two camps. Either you do a consistent increase of, you know, 3%, 4%, 5% or you hold it and then all of a sudden, you got to get it at some point and it's not a popular move. But obviously, it was well needed as you look at the cash flow of the sewer funds. So yeah.
Any other comments, questions that you have, Mr. Westman?
I just want to thank Steve for what you guys did, especially under the circumstances. And I definitely want to give a thanks to Marty and Judy and Debbie for all the hard work that you guys do. I know this is a hard time and you guys do a phenomenal job, but I just want to say thank you.
Can I piggyback on that, Mr. Man?
Sure, please.
You got to give the finance clerk, Judy New, 100% of the credit. Okay, 99% of the credit. And then Debbie are phenomenal. They do an awesome job for the city. And, you know, Steve will attest to this, not to have any findings other than what, lack of segregation of duties. I mean, that's their.
It's a standard.
Unless you want to give me three more people to help me out and we'll leave Judy alone, but I could use three more in my office.
Please convey that on to Judy too. Absolutely.
Yeah, they did, I think, a good job in that lack of segregation. As long as I've been on the council, we've had that. So I mean, we're doing something right. We don't have any problems there. I think they're doing a good job.
Okay. Mr. Tippel, any comments?
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to accept the year-end audit.
Motion's been made in second. And Steve, thank you. Before we leave, if you'll allow us, we'll quick call the question here in short order. Any other comments or questions as it relates to the Resolution 2023, 2020-23 acceptance of the year-end budget? Now at the time, any additional comments, dialogue? By sentence, we call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Any abstentions, passed unanimous. Thanks again.
Thank you so much.
You bet. And we'll have a representative available next year from the council to work with you on that effort besides staff. Okay, we are now down to, oh, Department's Lieutenant Hemmich, Mr., please proceed.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We provided you with 40 hours of police services for the month of May. And looking at the report here, it's a nice and boring report. I don't see anything really jumping out at, at me on anything. You know, you see a dog or an animal complaint and that's just a deer on the highway. The burning thing was during the burning ban and we had the people extinguish it. There's not, there's not anything really jumping out at me. There's no burglary. There's one little theft that was unfounded of more of a behavioral health problem. Some of the other problems that we had as far as involving law enforcement, again, involved behavioral health with some individuals. But otherwise, we do not have a lot of things going on. We did stop several vehicles and several subjects were cited for either not having a valid driver's license or shouldn't have even been driving because of not having a license or being revoked or suspended. And a couple of people coming, driving in the area a little too fast. But otherwise, I unfortunate, or fortunately, do not have anything really exciting for you. You guys were able to review the calls for service. And if you have any questions on any of them, I can try to answer that. But otherwise, nice and quiet.
Questions of the tenant as it relates to day-to-day operations, law enforcement in our community? Well, that was a visual aid. That was an added value. Thank you very much. Okay.
That'd be Wednesday night pager test.
Oh, yes.
Got a question for you. With all the different addresses within the city, do you guys experience problems locating on your emergency calls or whatever? Because we've got Kimball address, St. Cloud address, Wake Park address, St. Joe address. Does that give you guys a problem sometimes to pinpoint where you're supposed to go?
With Rockville, it usually doesn't happen at all. We do have, just the only reason I'm thinking of this is last week, there was a call on Washburn. And there's a Washburn in Haynesville and there's a Washburn in Belgrade. So there was a confusion there for a tiny bit. But otherwise, no. With our mapping services and with the layout of our 911 addressing, we really don't have much of an issue of getting to places. And again, Rockville is not fragmented enough where some areas where there's a complete no access across, but no, we don't really have problems with, is there a problem with a delay of time or I guess I'm not sure.
Well, there's been issues with the 911 calls within the city where, for instance, my address, if you Google or GPS my address, you'll end up in Coal Springs. And we've had different.
Just because it went to the dead-end road or the change of the highway?
Just because of my address being Coal Springs and there's a same street number and everything in Coal Springs, so.
And zip code oriented, I think, to a degree.
Not, not much for our mapping services. I mean, if you, if it pops up, it should come up still as Rockville as far as an address.
Well, if you GPS it as Rockville, you're fine. But if you GPS the address, the address.
But as far as a phone call coming in, should your address from a phone call should come into still the city of Rockville problem?
It will come in Rockville.
It sent our department to Coal Springs. Page came with just a physical address, not a name, and GPS. Interesting enough, Coal Springs, because of the woman who, uh, who was a page out, that is Rockville.
Which call was this?
That's a couple of years ago.
It was on the 3rd of July.
Derns County 911 person took care of it. He went in.
It was, wasn't last year.
Because anytime we do have any conflicts or any.
Yes, actually, I've had, in my neighborhood, it's happened three times, twice with ambulances and one with fire department where they couldn't locate.
I know, I know initially, we had the problem with the new highway and then Broadway being where it was old highway and we had some confusion there. But I was unaware of anything in the last year or two.
I think it's some USPS and some of those type of things, that there's several different databases that are out there and how, if it's Googling and different ones. But rather than, and that's a good question, Jerry. It's really one of those things that we've never finished yet in Rockville. And it is, I think that's one of our goals to get that cleaned up. But it's going to take some time and we have a lot of effort and this coal vault thing really stopped a lot of stuff, you know? It's an enormous amount of work.
I know our mapping services for sometimes are up by Avon. It'll put us, 185th Street will put us south of town where it's actually up by Pelican Lake Bottom. So, and we've had those corrected when we've got them on the mapping. But I was unaware of anything, saying.
Can you pull that mapping service up on your phone now if I give you an address? Will it tell you?
That mapping service? No, that's our county, our county map. I don't have that on my phone right now. But we use the county GIS and we use GeoCom for some of our mapping services. But we can look at, send me an email and we'll look at all of that to just make sure it's all okay.
Well, I'll probably be talking to you more as we.
Okay.
Proceed with this, yeah.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I'd like to get both sides of the stories.
Any other comments, questions as it relates to law enforcement in the city of Rockville? Thanks again for your special.
Thank you for your.
Yes. That's great when we have limited need for your resources. It's really great for a community.
I like to be able to do the reports where I am able to say that it's boring and there's not a rash of thefts, there's not a rash of harassment or burglaries or other problems in your community. So it's, it was.
So if we defunded the department like some people wanted to do, what would we do with this list of stuff that you just brought us?
Yeah, good, good luck.
Sheriff Department in, as it relates to law of Minnesota, law enforcement, city of Rockville is one of the best bangs for the buck we've ever had or something like that. So there's no doubt about it.
I will be able to comment as far as to say that it is still Minnesota nice for most of the areas around here. We still get the thank yous and that. So it's comforting that way during this rougher time for law enforcement.
Don't get discouraged.
Yeah, we continue, we'll see success with you guys over there. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let us continue, please. Should we? Thanks again. Planning Commission, Bill?
Planning Commission, we have one item on the agenda tonight. This is a variance request. The applicant is Northern Natural Gas Company. The owners are Donald and Marla Zeigmeier, 24992 Halfman Road in the city of Rockville. It's just southwest side of Glacier Road near the intersection of Halfman and Glacier. The variance request is to install a new 50 by 100-foot chain link fence, excuse me, approximately 52 feet from Glacier Road's center line. Property is owned Ag40. Property contains 125 acres. Safety and security fence to secure a pig receiver, and I think, there's a picture of it in your, in your.
Packet, yep.
Packet. Will help reduce negative impact on tillable acres. We did hold a public hearing, nobody did speak. The owners were at the public hearing asking some questions. The Planning Commission is recommending approval with a letter of intent, which we received from them, that if there's any roadwork done, that they widen that road, they have to take that fence down. And they have agreed to that.
Would be number three of the resolution.
Oh.
And we are on packet, on page 167 and several pages thereafter for the public that might be, we're watching it mainstreamed here, with all of the stuff that came through on the audit report.
I was going off my Planning Commission packet. Where's the resolution, you guys?
Here, let me just.
Okay. Number three is what is being requested is stipulated that there should be future road construction improvements that would require temporary relocation of chain link fence that is in the, is in the road right-of-way. It is Northern Natural Gas Company's financial responsibility to temporarily relocate said fence due to their occupation within the road right-of-ways. And they have agreed to do that. So we're recommending approval.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Questions before we go further? A motion would be in order?
Go move.
Second. Okay, motion's been made in a second. Bill, the, there's a, currently, there's a structure out there and so it makes no damn difference. But what is it that needs to be done out there? Just modification or modern?
They need to add a pig receiver in, along the same line. They need to add that.
Oh, so it's the same gas line, it's just modifying it and adjusting it?
Yep.
Okay, okay. And it's a fence and one, and it appears that there's just one exit or one driveway off of the, off of Glacier, correct?
Yep.
Okay, well, great. Comments, questions? Who are planning a zoning? Sensing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of that motion to advance 2020-24 granting the right-of-way variance on Northern Natural Gas? All those in favor of that motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Abstentions, none, passed unanimous. That's it? Bill?
That's it.
Okay. We are now at Department's number C. And there is a fire department report that was written and circulated to us. It's just an FYI, so it does not appear that we need council action. Any comments? Any comments, questions? Mr. Bodie, anything from you on your end?
My only concern is that, and it's not just here, but I'm sure it's all law enforcement, EMS, shortage of protective gas.
And that was.
It's gonna be like toilet paper. It'll catch up. I didn't mean that as a pun.
Yeah, I know what you mean. No, you're right. And that was conveyed, and hopefully Rodney will, there's some backordered stuff and things of that nature. Okay, so if that is complete, we have opted to not have an emergency management report because Mike is not here, so that D was canceled. Public Works, this is under 10E as in elephant, resolutions 2020-25, awarding quote, and this would be on council action, page 188 in the packet. There is a resolution that is advanced to us, correct? Oh, there was a quote, and I think it warrants some, a little bit of discussion. Quite frankly, with the COVID-19 dilemma, and this is my personal view, that there's a lot of funds that will probably not come in through from the League of Minnesota Cities and sales tax and all of that good stuff. And I know that we had budgeted a certain amount of money for putting in gravel, and this is the gravel quote, correct? I'm just curious, the feeling of the council members candidly here. Do we need to go ahead with that this year, or with the uncertainty? And, you know, we had a fairly large increase in taxes last year, and if we don't really need, I'm just bringing this up, if we don't need to have that, what would be stopping us from just stalling the whole project for a year, and then see how it goes, and then next year it'll go back out again? Jerry, I'm just gonna pick on you. I know that you were one of the individuals that said, do we really need to gravel all those roads? I'm hoping you see the validity in this, and I think that would be a unique way. And I'm not trying to do it, but other discussion. It's hard for me to read at this point the feeling, but that's just my reaction.
I think first of all, we need two quotes. Or secondly, we put it off a year, but either or.
Well, we wouldn't need two quotes because it's below the amount. But going back to the, if I can just, the root question. The root question, do we need to or do we not? And if we don't, then let's just have a motion to defer any action on this resolution until another time certain when it's brought back up again. That's the easiest way to get it off of our agenda and we acted on it, but it takes council action. Otherwise.
Well, first of all, on this quote, it's got a total of 84,000 in the bottom, not the two of them together.
There's two quotes there. One is an alternate, and one is the base.
But it would either be one or the other.
Yes, sir.
And it says Mitchell Lane or Agate Beach. It should be saying Mitchell Lane and Agate Beach.
That's the title.
All right, yeah, I, at the very least, I guess I would ask if we could at least postpone it for a month and maybe get, I haven't driven the road. I don't know how bad it is. What's the road committee feel about it? Have they looked at it?
It could most certainly wait till next year without a problem.
No, I would certainly be in favor of that.
Well, that's, thank you, Brian. That means a lot. You know, you know roads, and if you can say we could go and limp it along for another year or something like that?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Probably wonder if money wouldn't be well spent if we took some of this and used it for chemical treat to hold our good roads together a little bit better.
And that's a day-to-day operation, and it's flowing in there. So unless somebody else, I'm gonna try it. I'll make a motion that we just.
I just wanna, I'll make one.
Oh, go ahead, Donnie.
Like with Bill's, I'd like to see mostly one quote something, depending on the time. But I'd like to see two quotes, and also the grading in the roads. I haven't driven out there basically lately since early spring, but the roads like with the blading we're doing now, I stand with the, and the dust treatment are pretty, they're darn good shape, in my opinion. If that gravel can wait another year, you can baby it through. I know some other, the township's having the same issue. We're gonna have to wait for our funding a little more before do it, throw it out another year.
It's a healthy price, and if we can not, and just because it was budgeted, it doesn't mean we have to spend it. And so I'll take that, I'll make a motion that we postpone any activity on resolution 2020-25, and awarding of that quote to a time certain when either the RTU brings it to our administrator and administrator circulates it back to us. So that's our motion.
Could I just ask that you postpone indefinitely?
Postpone to a time certain, and it's to a time, to a time certain when Mr. Bodie, not next month or something like that, to a time certain when Mr. Bodie gets the pressure or needs that from the right group, and that's the RTU, or viewing. Not just because one city, one taxpayer pays and says, I need my road, and that doesn't do it. It takes a system. So that's the motion. Hopefully a second?
I did second that.
Yeah. Continue. Brian?
Discussion, wouldn't it be better, because of what Donnie and Bill said, if you're not gonna do it, just reject the bid and throw it out? And then if you're gonna do it in a time certain later, because if it's six months down the road or next year, this price is gonna change.
Yes, of course.
So just.
That's why we're not acting on the awarding of thing. That's what that motion is for, is to postpone any action.
But if you're postponing it, then this is leaving this on the table.
Okay, then to postpone indefinitely, so no action will be taken on that quote, and we'll be asking for additional or another round?
Another good letting, okay.
If you're okay to the friendly amendment to deny the quote and postpone the project?
To a time certain of next year. Yep, that's great. That clears it up. Okay, any other discussion? And Mr. Bodie, you have a clear understanding what this is all about? Great. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay. Any abstentions? Past unanimous.
I'd like to ask a few questions of Public Works. Apparently there's been some issues with our blacktopping. Can we get an update on that?
Well, it's not the blacktopping, it's the air patching machine that we rent with Coal Spring in Richmond. And this year, air patching caused some consternation amongst maybe 10, 12 different residents. And the explanation I got from Public Works is that the oil they received this year, which is a water-based oil, was looser and thinner than historically what we received. And so it did rain within a number of hours after he applied the air patching, and the oil ran. I went and looked at it, Duane looked at it, I think Bill did, and we all agree that it shouldn't have happened, and we'd like to not have had it happen. You know, I certainly understand the residents that had to clean their vehicles. I had to clean mine as well. Okay, let me correct that. My wife had to clean ours as well.
Well, I can believe that part. Do we, is this where we get our product from every year, or?
I bring that up, you know, that's.
If you want us to do more training, we can certainly send the guys to get somebody out here to train on air patching, even if it's loose, then maybe more grit is required on top.
I think we should do that.
But it also, what you do is if the oil is thinner, you will not, a couple of years ago I helped with some of that, the grit will not adhere. It's gonna water. It has to do with the thicker the oil. It's gonna like stick.
My point is, is this something you can determine before you put it down, or?
You have to put it, you have to get the oil and mixture out there. That'll tell you. I know Halfman right there with that dip, they filled that in. It really did a good job. Except one side, it's like bleeding through. It looks a little thin. But that, it's holding up perfect. And so, I mean, it's a little weird, but that was one of the best moves they did when they air patched that dip in the road there.
I talked with Gene, because I got calls and complaints on this, and I followed up with them. And then I met with Gene on another issue out on the road. And he had brought it to Mendota Tantrum, where they got the stuff from. And they said, yes, they got a bad batch of oil that they didn't, they didn't know it was bad till they started using. They had the same issue. So since then, they've corrected it. So, and like Marty alluded to when I was up, that is the only place that Gene said that we're locally that we can get it from.
Well, I don't mean to put the monkey on our maintenance people's back, but if, I guess I'm in favor of training if they want it. So if that's a question, I'm all for it.
Well, the air patching machine, if we're specifically honing in on that, and that's owned by the three cities, and was there ever proper orientation done for all three cities? Certainly here in Rockville with different public relations and stuff like that, and then subordinates that are in there. You know, is there proper training of, because that's a special, kind of a unique way, to air patch tar instead of the old conventional way. And so all of us, maybe it'll take all of us to understand it and have a little bit of a demo out here or something like that. But I think that's logically, because, and I'm gonna be bold here. I think I could have gone down to a local box store, found some tar, poured it out there, ran out, and it finds its own level or something like that. But the grit, I just, I think that's the component that I see missing. So irrelevant if it's runny or not, but it's the grit, the grit proportion of it that was not added. And the important thing that I heard from this is that our administrator confronted or chatted with our Public Works, and so our Public Works person is aware of it, and a written report back to us that says, what are we doing to change our procedure? And if that's training, we already gave a pretty good nudge to Mr. Bodie that says, if that's what they need, we're willing to foot the bill to do it. Because I don't have better things, we all have better things to do than to get constituency service. And it was on a weekend, and I too did enough of that, so that's what I think we're.
Did Coal Spring experience the same issues?
I'm sorry, I don't have an answer to that.
Well, I'm just curious if. But yeah, you know, here's a good example. We cut the graveling and let's take some of that money if it's gonna help Public Works out. And if they're willing to get some help on that, or get some schooling, or whatever, I think that's what we should be doing.
Any last comments from the council members? Mr. Bodie, just a quick comment or so?
If I could, then, Mr. Mayor and council members, that addressed the air patching. We also received complaints on the patchwork. And I would like to comment, if I could, that we don't have the equipment that Stearns County, the state of Minnesota, or federal government does to do patchwork on the highways. The patchwork that they did, it's called tailgate spreading. In my opinion, they did a really good job. For the equipment they have, they did a good job with hot mix. It's not an easy job to let that fall freely from the truck and use the payloader to spread it out. And thanks to you, we now have a roller to pack it as of last year. But that's how we do our road patching. We don't have a machine to cut it out. One of you suggested we could get a machine. Well, now there's another capital expenditure. There's another machine to run. You know, you could rent that though.
Yeah.
But it's another machine. It takes three people to get the machinery out there now the way it is.
Bottom line, Lena Lane needs to be, you know, milled and overlaid and stuff like that, and we just limp along, and next year that's gotta be the highest one.
To piggyback on what Marty said, is I did meet with Gene, that was why I was meeting with him. And I had expressed to him, when they're mixing tar, they're mixing base course, base coat, base course, I'll get it outright.
Yeah.
And they're, and they don't mix wear course at the same time. It's one or the other. And the base course has got one inch minus grit in it or rock in it. So when you're trying to put that over a hot piece of, or a cold piece of tar already, you can't get that rock to stick in, so it makes marbles and joins up with your tires. So I told Gene that you're gonna have to coordinate when they're mixing tar, when they're doing fines or when they're doing wear course, and get that, because it's finer grit, and you don't have nearly that issue when you're trying to get it thin. And he thought that was probably a good idea.
There's a trick to every trade, and I guess that's where I'm going with this training thing. Maybe other people have got shortcuts or something. I don't know anything about that part of it, but like I say, if they need some money spent to learn the tricks of the trade a little better, a little easier, let's do it.
Yeah, Brian's right on, that comment that he made, and those are experts in that field. We had a lot of free information that I got from, you know, people that have been in that industry. So enough said at this point. Let's continue, please, shall we? We have very few things that are left. I think we had council action under other, was COVID-19 that resolution that was advanced? And this is a directive that's coming through. The League of Minnesota Cities is targeting to have the 19th of June as cities to be prepared, ready, and they're drafting resolutions. And so Mr. Bodie had, working with our legal counsel, has advanced one that is probably gonna be pretty much universal. But if not, we don't have a meeting before that. The state would like to have it. And if this is not tweaked exactly right today, we can always modify it.
This is pretty standard.
Yeah.
I've seen about three or four of them. Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept.
Okay, and that is the community prepared, I lost mine right now, I apologize.
City of Rockville Preparedness Plan.
There you go. That's the motion that was made. Thank you again. So there's a motion from, on floor, COVID-19 Preparedness Plan. You all have it brought to us. It was not circulated. It was just today advanced to us. And the timing sequence of waiting until July and after the target date that the state has, so we'll go with that legal second to Bill. That would be.
Brian seconded it.
Oh, Brian did, okay. Motion's been made and seconded to advance the COVID-19 Preparedness Plan. Continued additional questions, comments?
Either that, or we could just have a protest in the street.
Okay. That wasn't in the form of a motion, or a second, so therefore, okay. Other relevant questions as it relates to the item on the agenda here? Sensing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of COVID-19 Preparedness Plan, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Nay. Any abstentions? Past unanimous. Thank you. City Hall siding, and there is a proposal that was presented to us. And what's the wishes of the council as it relates to that proposal? Maybe just a little background, who's spearheading? Is that Jerry, or is that you, Mr. Bodie?
Both sides.
Yes.
What prepared, or here, I found it.
Do you have the samples?
It's right here.
We've got a bid from Schlangen Construction. We've got a leak in the small conference room over there on the roof. And apparently, they have to take the, I don't know if you'd wanna call it siding or whatever, off the exterior wall. And if you do that, it can't be reused. And we've got options of, you can put something up there that you have to repaint, but being as the rest of the building is all maintenance-free, the suggestion was made to put some steel up. So we've got a bid here for $3,629 to do the job. Pending on anything that's rotten once he takes the siding off on the bottom. But other than that, I would ask that maybe we would go with the closest matching steel to the building as we can, and ask Mr. Schlangen to replace whatever he takes off with steel.
Could I ask him to work in color with staff? I'm thinking Debbie's got a pretty good grip on color coordinations.
Yeah, whatever comes the closest, I would say, let's go with it, right?
What kind of steel is it? I mean, I don't mean.
It's staccato board.
It would be pole barn steel, is what he indicated to me.
It's gonna be pole barn steel?
That's what he, it won't be siding. It would be sheets of steel.
You okay with that, on this really fine, nice building?
Well, the upside of it is if the studs match, and you can just screw it on, and if there's still a problem, it's easy to take off. Siding, you've gotta match it a little closer.
I, I'm not real comfortable with pole barn steel up there, just not.
Before we get to that point, great discussion, by the way. And that is, the scope of work needs to be defined a little bit so that if we get a second quote, and Bill said, you know, we should get a second quote for this, I agree. This should also get a second quote, you know, so it's no different than, you know, getting others, minimum of two. But there's gotta be a scope of work, and after last month's meeting, we all just kinda, a few of us jutted out, kinda looked at it from this level. I did climb up there. And from my many years in the construction thing, I looked, I still have the schematics of when the building was built. I served on the EDA, we had project managers. And that building, the architect on that building has a specific detail of how that thing is supposed to be put on. That's not how it was put on. It's a step flashing with riglet, and then maintenance, and it talks about the maintenance of the staccato board. To the best of my knowledge, I don't believe we have had, we have had limited maintenance, if at all. And so.
And so, long-term, yes, but another coat of paint over it or something like that? Why was that ever put on there? Why didn't we go all granite? Because structurally, it would have been impossible. And that's why it ended up being the staccato board, and it's four-by-eight sheets, and it wicks the water into it like a sponge, if it's not properly painted. So even if it's not raining, you're have that capability of moisture migrating into the staccato board, into the substrate, the sheeting, and it takes a long time to come down, and it can pour different places. That's why it, it just came out the least of one. That's my professional opinion from the many years that I've been in the business. So before we go forward, I think we need to go and have someone that has the background capabilities, architects do it all the time, stuff like that, it's a commercial building, it's a commercial building, you need to go and have, I think we need to have our building inspector, just a token meeting with him, and say, what is it that you, do we have to be worried about structural integrity that's been lost?
Well, he did say that he will have the building inspector on site when he does the work.
Sure, sure, you know. That's just my observation. Other discussions?
My personal opinion, Duane, you can chime in, rather than putting the pole barn steel up there, I, I like the steel thing. Why can't you put like house roofing steel?
Horizontal rather than vertical?
Well, you can put it up vertical, but it's narrower stuff, and that steel can come off.
Well, yeah, I mean...
And then, and it just, it, it would look better than pole barn steel.
I can agree with what you're saying, but in the area that it's at, I bet you I could put a piece of yellow steel up there, and I could ask him six months, what's up there, and you tell me, geez, I don't know. But that's up to you.
Until you pointed it out, I didn't know what was there.
I know the stuff's gonna be a little bit more money, but I just, personally, I think it's gonna look ten times better.
Standing seam, standing seal when one ties over and you have no, no fasteners showing?
Correct.
Yeah, that's logically what we should be doing on a commercial application like this. But the quote that was brought forward, and it's great, starting point, we're discussing it, is it both sides, both the south side and the east side, that this quote do it? Or is it, it is both sides? So it'd be everything that's on the, above the roof line of the primary...
It's east and west sides.
No, no.
East and west.
East and south.
East side and south, because there's granite on the north, and there's granite on the west.
East and south. Yeah, I think that's correct.
So it'd be above the roof line, one of them has a valley coming, or a hip coming across, and the other...
Well, specifically, it was the east side that was leaking.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. And it poured it out in the, in the smaller thing.
So you want another bid, is that what you're saying?
I think we have to, the scope of work, write up a scope of work, that everybody knows what they're bidding on it, if it's vertical, it's horizontal...
We can get another quote for your siding, Brian, just tell me tomorrow what it is.
What do they call that stuff? It's just, it's just house steels, roofing?
Standing seam, standing seam steel, virtually on commercial, when you have, the fasteners are hiding, and then you hook it in, lap it over, and then you continue, and then you keep working across, and so...
Do we want to ask a professional, since this building looks this way?
The architect?
I, I know what you're going with that, and it's not a bad idea, the only thing is, it's gonna cost us some money.
Sure it is.
Well, a professional did it in the first place, and we got a leak in here.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, times have changed, architecture's changed, let's, we update it, let's update it. Building looks nice. I'm not qualified to tell you what to put on the side of a building, and I would argue with a few of you.
I'm not either, but I couldn't tell you Mike Schlangen is, because he's built a lot of nice houses.
Yes, he does.
You want another quote, we'll get another quote.
And no, and I'm not arguing that, Jerry, I'm just saying if, if we can change it now and, and modernize it, let's do it. Schlangen can still put it up.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not saying he specifically needs to, I just said, I found it kinda interesting that the whole building is maintenance-free, and then they put something like that on there, it's gonna weep moisture in, doesn't that make a lot of sense?
There was a reason at the time when it was created, and the EDA had a tough...
Let's, let's not go back to that, let's...
Okay.
Okay, and we...
So, tell me what you want.
I'd like to get somebody in here...
You want an architect to look at it, a commercial architect?
The last architect that we had on this one...
Or a designer, or whoever, I don't, somebody.
I'll look at it.
I have a tough time picking out my clothes in the morning.
And then ask, once the scope is, work is created?
Yeah, we've, yeah.
Then have him go out and get requests for proposal?
Then Mike's gonna have to submit.
Sure, yeah, and make sure that Mike's aware of that, Mr. Bodie, if you would, please, so that we don't lose somebody. We wanna try to do it locally.[1733.25]